To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, take the roll, please.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Baumann.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Brzaska.
Here.
Thank you. President Brawley is unavailable this evening. However, we do have a quorum, and we'll move on to the people's business. First up, we have public participation. We have CASA check presentation. Who is doing that? I didn't know that. Thank you. Lucy.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This week, we reflect on all the things that make us grateful in life. As Thanksgiving draws near, we take a moment today to show our gratitude for all River Run has enabled us to accomplish this year. Thanks to record-breaking heat, and one of our biggest runner turnout yet, and our wonderful presenting sponsor, Montgomery Place Apartments, we are thrilled to support a local organization and to present a check for $2,000 to CASA of Kendall County.
Fantastic.
This event wouldn't have been possible without the incredible support and participation of our runners and sponsors. Thank you for showing up and making every mile meaningful. CASA's work is truly inspiring. Every day, they ensure that children in our community have a voice and an advocate during some of the most challenging times in their lives. After hearing stories and talking with volunteers and CASAs, it is clear, the work this organization does literally changes people's lives. With the help of a CASA volunteer, children find stability, have a constant presence in their life, and have an adult to guide and mentor them. These volunteers didn't just attend court hearings, they became a trusted adult who listened, advocated, and made sure the child's needs were never overlooked. That's the kind of impact your support helps make possible. We are honored to contribute to CASA's mission and to help them amplify the difference they make for children and families. Thank you again to Montgomery Place Apartments, every runner, volunteer, sponsor, and supporter who helped make this donation possible, and thank you very much to CASA for the vital work that you guys do every single day in our communities. If you could please join me up here, we'd love to give you a little check. Well, a big check.
We'll just keep making them move, right?
So again, thank you so much for this, your participation and your continued support really do mean a lot to us. Montgomery does have quite a few children, unfortunately, that are affected by CASA of Kendall County. We know that you're in a unique position where you are covered by two counties, and so the support that you show to both Kendall and Kane is very much understood, and we are very grateful for you, and we are grateful for all the awareness that you continue to provide for our program, as well as the support that each and every one of you show by sharing exactly what CASA does and how much it means to the community. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item, we have a presentation on BSNA online permit portal.
Yes.
Alrighty.
So, I will quickly go through a little introduction. So it is my pleasure to introduce Matt Fitzpatrick, our village building inspector and our department's BSNA super user. The success of our year-one implementation is due largely in part to his proactive nature and dedication to improving services for our residents. This evening, he joins us to introduce the BSNA online permit portal. Our new software allows us for the ability to accept permits online, and in February of this year, we opened up that online permit portal for our registered contractors to utilize for permits such as simple permits like roofs, windows, solar, fences. Contractors that are registered with the village are issued a BSNA PIN in order to utilize the permit portal. Residents, however, do not need a PIN for this service. So tonight, he is going to demonstrate for the village board and those at home how easy it is for a homeowner to utilize the online permit portal, and also the increased efficiency our new ERP system has provided administratively for us to process and approve those permits. So with that, I turn it over to Matt.
Hello.
Welcome.
How we doing?
It's nice to see you here.
You as well. All right, so this is a pretty simple process. If you're a resident, you basically, you just go to BSNA Online, which I have pulled up here, and this is the website for all of BSNA, and then what you do is, in the top right corner here, there's, you select a municipality. Click on that, and then select our state, and then Montgomery. The Village of Montgomery. Like Sonia said, you don't have to have an account for a homeowner, which is kind of nice. I know it's kind of a pain for homeowners to have to create an account and give out your email and everything. So if you are a property owner or a homeowner, you don't have to do that to do this process, which is real nice. So then, on the left-hand side here, it just has "Apply for a Permit." Before you do that, if you are a resident, you have to make sure, though, right here, that it says Village of Montgomery up here. This is basically linked to our server, so...
And that is important because there are other Montgomerys out there, so if you haven't selected Illinois and selected Montgomery, that way, you could be getting a different Montgomery somewhere else in the United States of America.
Let's see, "Apply for a Permit." So I created a fake address with, it's not linked to any PIN numbers, just because if you create it on here, it goes into the database, and I don't want to create a permit. We use it for just test permits and just testing purposes. So then, right here, if you guys want to read, or if you want me to read, there's like a little disclaimer. It just basically says, if you're a contractor, you have to have an account set up. Homeowner, you don't. Boulder Hill residents must contact the Kendall County Building Department for permits. That's a, excuse me, that's a pretty common thing, not common, but we do get quite a few permits from Boulder Hill. People submit permits, so we have that on here. If they submit it, unfortunately, right now, they're on our water system, so they potentially could apply for a permit on here. We're trying to work that out to where they don't have an option for permits, but that's what we're working on right now. And then, let's see here, so I'll search by address. You can do name, parcel, address. I'll just do address, One North River Street, and then I'll search that. And then when you search it, it has the parcel number, it has the owner name, and then obviously the address. So you click on that, and just verify that all the information on the screen is correct. And then go to Next. And then, all of our permits aren't on here. We have, it's restricted to what we select. We don't, we don't have larger projects or commercial projects, just because if it's a project that requires more than one contractor, it gets difficult to put all the contractors on here. So, you know, the easy permits for, you know, a deck, a driveway, it's all typically projects that are one contractor. So I'm going to go through, and I'll show you guys how to do a fence permit on here. It's kind of streamlined the process, it's kind of nice. We get a lot of emails when permits are submitted, and, you know, the first time they email us, they'll include one thing, but we need four things. And then we respond back to them, and then they'll include a second thing. The way we have it set up on here is, we have, you can't submit it unless you give us the required documents. So you have to put in a Julie number, I'll show that here in a second, but just a small detail, five-foot fence. Okay? And then the basic usage, this can be kind of confusing, but obviously, if it's, you know, a residence, you just click residential. The basic usage is set up for our monthly report, basically. The construction value, I'll just put $500. For fences, we do not require a total square footage, obviously, so there's no red star next to it, so that's not required. But Julie dig number, that's required for a fence, and that's probably the most common thing that people submit, and they don't give us a Julie dig number. So, and then hit Next. And I know I'm going through this pretty fast. If there's any of you that want a more detailed, I can talk to Sonia, and we can sit down and go through it a little bit more detailed, if you want. All right, then you certify that you are the homeowner of the property. Just put in your name, your phone number, these are all required, again. And then Next, and this is real-time, so as soon as someone submits it, we have it set up to where it sends our administrative assistant an email that we have a web request. So if you submit it right now, in 30 seconds, we'll be notified that you guys did this, which is nice.
How fast, then, would it be approved?
Depending on how busy we are, we like to do one to two days, one to three days. For the web requests, it's very easy. I mean, the way we have it set up, we have to, you have to submit all your required documents, so there's really no, there's not a lot of work for us. We go through it, and it's all itemized, the attachments, the platte survey, everything is set in place. So, we would like to request people to do this, just for the ease of ourselves, and it's a lot easier for the homeowner, too, because you go on here, and you can see exactly what's required for your specific type of project that you're doing.
So, as a resident, I, let's say I want to do the fence. If I don't have everything, would I have to set up an account in order to have what I have saved, or do I have to start all over every time?
You would have to, I mean, you could set up an account. I don't know, to be honest with you, I don't know if it would save how far you are in that process. It might be an option. I can look and get back to you if you'd like.
I'm just curious, I'm just asking questions from my user perspective.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you have an account, you should be able to save your progress where you're at, if you're just going straight in and not bothering to set up a BSNA online account. You wouldn't need to start over, if you can't quickly grab that information to be able to put it in.
Fair enough.
I have a question that goes back to the beginning. You'd mentioned that if we type in Montgomery, it may be Montgomery, Alabama, right? If we're sharing a link with the residents, can we make the link specific enough that it'll automatically take you to Montgomery, Illinois?
Yeah, yeah, we could select our municipality and take that link and share that, just so it goes there, but we would, you know, I would still remind everybody that if you're going to be on here, just verify in the top-left corner that it says Village of Montgomery, Illinois.
Okay.
And then the fees are right here. Obviously, you don't pay until, you know, the permit is approved. We send them a link once that's there. But here's, so for different type of permit, different types of permits, this is the area that we show what's required. So a fence, a survey is required, so I've put a platte survey on here that I can just attach. But for like solar, we require engineering plans, architectural plans, so that's on there as well. So then you just go to whatever file you have, that's your platte survey, save it, and then it's right there. And then, if you wanted, you can add an additional document, if you wanted the contract for the fence contractor. If this is a contractor applying for it, obviously, a homeowner wouldn't have that, if they're doing it themselves. So then, here's where you submit. It just basically has all the information related to the property, the type of project. Then we do have a disclaimer on here, that you have to click, you cannot submit it until you click the two disclaimers on here. And then, like I said, it's real-time, so this gets submitted, I have a workflow set up to where, once we have a web request, it sends it directly to Jill and myself for review and approval, and the permit's done. Does anybody have any other questions? I know, like I said, I went through it pretty quick.
Super user Matt, can people still come in and apply for it?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. I know some people aren't, I myself, I'm not real tech savvy, so I would rather prefer coming in myself and, you know, bringing in documents. It's more work for us, but, you know, we're used to it, we've done it in the past, so...
And if a homeowner doesn't know where to get their platte survey?
Correct. Yeah.
Would you just be able to submit a scan of your platte survey?
Yeah.
If you had a platte survey, you just submit a scan of it?
Yep, yep, you just scan it, and then you attach it on here, and then Jill has a, she has a program that just turns everything, like, into a PDF.
Is this easy, accessible on the village website?
You know, I'm not real sure if...
Yes, we have a link on the village's website, on the building permit section. Should be, yes.
So in then, in that building permit section, is there a list of things that would be needed for each type of project, or do they find out when they get through these steps?
We have handouts on the website for different types of permits that do itemize the things that you have to submit for a permit, and those are reflected on here, so that is something they can easily reference, and then when they come online, they would know what they need to submit.
Okay, so they're not necessarily going through these first couple of steps, and then, oh, you need, you know, say it was more than this, you need five things, oh, well, I don't have all five things.
Correct. Yeah, no, like Sonia said, we do have a section on the website to where, if you're going to do a fence, it has the fence requirements, and that shows what is needed to apply for a fence permit, or what's required.
Okay. And you all said this went live earlier this year?
Yes, we opened it up and put it on the website in February, and we sent out an email to all of our registered contractors with their PINs, so they could start utilizing it. So we have about three or four contractors that are very regular users of it, and then a few, you know, kind of random ones that utilize it. We haven't had a whole lot of homeowners using it, but we haven't really advertised it for homeowners until now. So, but they also have the option to do that. So on our building permits page, we do have the link to the BSNA online for Montgomery, and we also have a link for instructions for contractors on how to sign up on BSNA online, and how to get their PINs and information like that.
And has it been tested off of mobile phone?
I have not, I'll be honest with you, I've never tested to do a permit on there. I use BSNA on a tablet myself, just when I'm out in the field on inspections, and I have no problems, so I don't see, maybe on a phone, just because it's such a small device. But I do know BSNA is working on a, I think they're working on an app. I don't know how far they are, I think they've started that, but...
Yeah, unsure, but their website does format to mobile, if you're on a mobile device, so it's not like you have a desktop screen.
There is a reason why I'm asking, and I will, I'm not going to name names, but another municipality that I had to submit something for a relative, so I think we all know what municipality I'm talking about. It didn't work on the mobile, and several phone calls were placed, and it took, I don't know, the thing is finally fixed today, and it's been out since the end of October. So, that's why I'm asking you these specific questions, because of the experience I just had with a different municipality. So I want to make sure that our residents don't have that frustration, and I was trying to do stuff off my phone, that's why I asked you that, so...
Yeah, absolutely. And like I said, all the permits are not on here, it's specific, just to make things easier on our end. Solar, like Sonia said, solar is probably the most popular. We don't ever get any solars emailed to us. Now, all the solar contractors, they're used to this, and they specifically just submit this, and it's really nice, just because the way we have the solar set up, like I said, we have an area for the construction plans, the engineering stuff, the platte, sometimes they give a platte survey, and then it just, once they submit it, it gets put in the right area on BSNA, so we don't have to do anything. We just basically do a review, approve the permit, and it's done.
Nice.
So...
So once it's approved, the applicant will receive an email from our department with an invoice and a link to be able to pay for the permit, and then once that happens, it should, in most cases, it will auto-email that permit to the applicant once it's paid for and approved.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, that seems pretty straightforward.
Like I said, if you guys have any other questions, reach out to Sonia, and if you want to get together, we can. Alrighty, thank you for your time.
Thank you for the demonstration.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, Mike. Okay, moving on to our next item, we have a public hearing for the 2025 tax levy. Director Minnick, do you have anything? Oh, wait, do I have to open this first? Okay, I'm opening the public hearing. Director Minnick, do you have anything you'd like to add from the last time?
I just have some general comments related to the tax levy, if that's okay. Tonight, we're continuing the process of adopting the 2025 property tax levy for the village. We'll be holding the public hearing, and a little bit later on in the agenda this evening, the first reading of the ordinance for the approval and adoption of the 25 tax levy is on the agenda. State statutes do require that we hold a public hearing prior to the adoption of the tax levy each year, and notice of the public hearing was published in the Kendall County Record on November 13th, in accordance with those requirements. Just a bit of a basic review of the 2025 levy. Property taxes do represent the third-largest source of revenue in the general fund, and for our most recent fiscal year ended April 30th, 2025, they represented about 15.5% of the total revenues for the general fund for that fiscal year. Our 2025 property taxes are collected during calendar year 2026, and they finance various public safety, public works, and administrative expenses for the village's fiscal year ending April 30th, 2027. The levy was introduced at the November 10th, 2025 meeting, and the amounts presented tonight are consistent with that discussion. The total general levy is $2,720,300, which is a $102,980 increase over the 2024 levy amount. That represents about a 3.93% increase. The levy does incorporate a 2.9% inflationary increase to the existing levy, plus the appropriate amount of the levy for new property in accordance with property tax cap statutes. The increased revenue will be utilized to partially offset an increase in our contribution to the police pension fund, as determined by the village's actuary. Each year, the village does have an actuarial study performed on the police pension fund, and through that study, it was determined that the contribution needs to increase by approximately $148,000, and that will be partially offset by the $102,900 increase in the levy. The remaining $45,000 of that increase will need to come from other general revenue sources. Based on the estimated equalized assessed value of the village or the property tax base, we do anticipate about an $11 annual increase to the owner of a $300,000 property for the 2025 tax levy. Typically, the village portion of the taxes represent about 4% to 5% of the resident's total tax bill. We do expect that that trend will continue, and that will be, we will be essentially in that same range of magnitude based on the 2025 levy. In addition to the general levy, as we've discussed, there is an additional $404,100 levied for the 13 active special service areas that are contained within the village's borders. That also incorporates a 2.9% inflationary increase in the levy amounts. The increase in the special service area levies is about $10,450 over the 2024 levy amounts. The last step in the process, or kind of the next step in the process, would be the second reading of the ordinance and consideration of the adoption of the levy at the December 9th meeting. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Did we have any, well, obviously, we don't have anyone here tonight from the public, for the public hearing. Did we receive anything via email?
I did not receive anything. I don't know if Finance did.
No.
Okay, and nobody online that we know of? I don't see any extras, so, okay. So I can close the public hearing for now, or, and then we can, we'll hold our questions until we get to the ordinance, or, yes? Okay, so I will close the public hearing for now. Our next, and then we'll talk more.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Minnick. Our next item is public comment. Again, there is nobody here in the room with us.
We did not receive any email or...
Not received anything, okay. All right, so we will then move on to the consent agenda. I will read the items and then entertain a motion for approval. We have the minutes of the November 10th, 2025 village board meeting, accounts payable summary report through November 24th, 2025, in the amount of $2,830,554.95. We have the water production report and the refuse report, both for October 2025, the 2026 meeting schedule, and Ordinance 2153 granting special use permits in Kane and Kendall County, Illinois for UGL Truck Center and UGL Truck Sales. By Brzaska, second by Guyer, take the roll, please.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Carrie 60, thank you. Moving on to items for separate action, our first item is Resolution 2025-034, authorizing the acceptance of public improvement and bond release for Marquis Point Unit 1. Director App.
Thank you, Trustee Spurling. The attached resolution does approve for the reduction in the performance security for Marquis Point Unit 1, as well as the acceptance of the related improvements for Unit 1. The developer has completed the construction of those improvements and addressed all of our punch list items in accordance with the PUD Ordinance and Development Agreement that we entered into with D.R. Horton. They have, they are therefore requesting the village's acceptance of those public improvements and a reduction in the replacement bond that they posted when they purchased the property. EEI and staff recommend the reduction to $84,027.40, which is 10% of the original public, pardon me, original public improvement bond that was posted by Hartz Homes when this development did begin. So that will be held for one year, for the maintenance period as required by our code, and then we will be able to release that in 2026. So I am happy to answer any questions that you have, but I did want to put this on the regular agenda rather than the consent agenda, since it was part of the development agreement and PUD requirements.
So moved.
So I know that, who wants to make the second?
Second.
I know. There was a lot of discussion about the roads in a portion of this. Is that included in this? The roads in that first piece that's completed?
Yes, so they completed, what would they call it, a scarification process, and then put in the final lift on the roads. Streetlights were replaced, we had several, I think, sewer and storm sewer manholes that had to be uncovered and fixed, so all of those items have been taken care of, and EEI has been out to inspect, as well as public works.
And they are now included in part of the snow removal plan?
That's correct, so in this year's snow removal plan, pending the approval tonight, they will be incorporated into our typical route.
into our typical route, um, and those streets identified in Phase 1 will be included.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Um, it was moved by Youngerman and second by Marasek. Take the role, please. Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Carrie Six Zero, thank you. Item B, ordinance 2156, for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2026, and ending April 30th, 2027. Uh, this is first reading. Uh, Director Minnick, he just covered that during our public hearing, so is there any questions, any further discussion on this?
I'm still an L.
We are aware. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We'll move on to our next item, because that was, that was first reading. Uh, let's see, we have an IGA with City of Aurora for the cost-share agreement for Douglas Avenue/road resurfacing, uh, with the Surface Transportation Program. Engineer Ott.
Thank you, Trustee Spurling. Uh, as discussed at the last board meeting, the village has received a grant through the Kane-Kendall Council of Mayors to resurface Douglas Avenue/road from US Route 30 to Ashland Avenue, which includes apportions that are both in the Village of Montgomery and the City of Aurora. Uh, this IGA, um, discusses and shows the cost split between the communities, uh, based on the pavement area that is in each community, roughly 21% of the share for the city, and 79% of the share will be, uh, by the Village of Montgomery. Uh, this was approved by the city's finance committee on November 13th, and is on their city council for tomorrow for approval.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Engineer Ott? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marasek, second by Youngerman. Take the role, please. Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Carrie Six Zero, thank you. Uh, there are no items for discussion, new or unfinished business. I don't remember which way I went last time.
Okay, I can start.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, first thing is, um, leaf pickup. Uh, Public Works is doing a phenomenal job this year of leaf pickup. Um, best year ever, I think. I, I know you've had three vehicles out, and, um, yeah, there's, I've been traveling a lot the last couple of weeks throughout the village, and I'm telling you, I'm not seeing a whole lot of, I'll go, I'll go out, and I'll see a whole lot of piles. I'll come back home, and it's like, what the heck did these guys pick all these leaves out there? Really doing a good job of making routes through the village. Um, and, um, we're gonna continue next week?
Yes, so we're gonna extend leaf collection. Uh, we put out a, um, information today, uh, to residents that we're gonna be extending the week of December 1st, so next week, uh, we'll do our final cleanup. We are making one pass through the village, so we could do get a lot of calls frequently from, uh, residents wanting to know what day, um, that we pick up. That is, um, impossible for us to give them a, uh, even an approximate, because it's based upon volume. Uh, as we've made great headway, as Trustee Guyer mentioned, uh, that time is starting to reduce down, uh, so we anticipate that it's likely that we'll be finished with collection in, in, uh, the early part of the week. Uh, but again, that's gonna be dependent on the volume. So we urge residents to make sure that they get their piles raked, uh, out to the curb, um, no later than 7:00 AM on Monday morning. Uh, that's when the trucks will be coming through, um, and again, that, the time that they come by each residence is gonna vary, but, um, it'll be nice to have after the holiday. Typically, traditionally, we end December 1st. This year, it falls on that Monday, um, so thankfully, we were able to work with our provider, LRS, to continue, uh, just the bulk program, uh, for one additional week, uh, next week. Uh, so a reminder, this is the last week for yard waste through LRS, which is their curbside collection, which be the brown bags that are placed out with different landscape wastes. So this will be the last week for that. Next week will be the last week for the bulk pickup that Public Works performs, so there's no confusion to residents.
Very good.
I have one other thing, too. Um, on South Main Street, once you go, uh, south of Watkins, go around the corner there to Case, um, I was talking to the resident, uh, that lives in the home there on the corner, and this is on the east side. Um, she was asking why the sidewalk stopped at the house to the north of her, and it doesn't continue around Case. Is that part of our sidewalk program, where we're trying to fill out our gaps?
So, that's an area, uh, with the Water Main Project that we're gonna be doing, uh, hopefully, next year. Uh, then we'll obviously start looking at our, uh, paving plan, so it's an area that we have already kind of talked about, um, Engineer Ott and myself, about some of the sidewalks. There are more than one section, uh, in that area where there's incomplete sections of sidewalks, so, uh, something that we're definitely gonna be evaluating. As we all know, sidewalks can either be very welcomed, uh, by some, or, uh, very much opposed by some, so it is always a delicate situation that we try to work through, but, uh, we obviously want that connectivity, uh, where it makes sense, and we're definitely gonna, uh, look at that and investigate that when we look at those areas.
Okay, cool. Thank you. That's all I got.
Excellent. Ma'am?
Um, so, as Trustee Guyer said, yeah, it's been a great job. I think I saw the trucks out yesterday as well, so, I mean, they are just constantly on the move, which is wonderful. However, um, this year seems to be a horrible, horrible year for burning, um, that us residents on the far west side are kind of dealing with. I know it's not a village issue, but hopefully, maybe the village could offer some communication to the, the county for us. Residents along Manchester Drive, Prairie Crossing, the Concord area, where we back up to the, I believe it's the Willowbrook, um, neighborhood, which is unincorporated, um, the, the smoke this year, I think, has been one of the worst that it's ever been. And if you haven't experienced it, I would love for you, before the leaf season is over, to drive through, where you can just see the smoke consist- continually, um, just wafting between the houses, and my wife actually got up last night, in the middle of the night, and started boiling cinnamon sticks and orange peels, because even though with our windows locked and closed, the smell of smoke inside the house is terrible. So, I realize the cost is prohibitive, and I know we talked with, uh, President Broly about it a couple of years ago, and I haven't brought it up since. To go through and send trucks back in our neighboring, um, unincorporated areas would be very cost prohibitive to us, but if we didn't, can encourage communication with the county, encourage mulching rather than burning, doing something, because it is bad this year. It's getting terrible, so, and as the trees get bigger, more leaves are falling, it's only gonna get worse. So I realize as a village, there's not a lot we can do with a county ordinance, but hopefully, maybe if there's some sort of official communication, we could put out on behalf of the village residents to the county.
I noticed it last night. It was bad all over the west side last night. It was bad north to Prairie North. It was bad inside our house, and our windows were closed, and I, there, I don't think there was anyone burning in, in my subdivision or anything. I think it was coming from-
It's, it's all back, it's right behind us, and it's unfortunate, because we, we talk about it when we have projects at the village. Um, I remember the residents that moved in by the water tower, right? They bought, uh, a home next to an open lot of land, and all of a sudden, it's getting built on, and hey, we didn't, that wasn't supposed to happen. This neighborhood was used to, for 30 years, 40 years, 50 years, a cornfield behind their, their house, and now, for 23 years later, there has been a neighborhood, and we still have residents back there that won't talk over the fence, won't acknowledge us, because we are the, the newbies, right? And so, all of those burn piles, for most of them, have been pushed to that back fence line. So, um, it, it's, it's just really, really bad. I mean, it's gotten so bad, we've had former residents that have gone out with, with hoses on, on burn piles, and the sheriff department's been called out, and it gets, it, it gets heated sometimes-
Yeah.
-back there regarding, um, the burning issue, so, um, I think it would be a sign of good faith, at least, if there could be at least some sort of, um, again, communication resolution to the county board or the health department, um, whoever would oversee that, um, advocating against that practice. Um, it's, again, the smell, the discomfort of it, but you could even smell it, I mean, it, you feel it in your chest, your lungs, the cough, and that's inside your home, so.
Yeah. Okay. So. Perhaps some, some type of solution, something brainstorming.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty bad, but it smells like you've had a bonfire in the middle of your-
Yeah.
Your living room.
Anything else?
Well, there could be, but that's it for now.
Steve.
Uh, Director App, do you have a consensus, or have you, uh, received responses from everyone, uh, related to lying metal?
Um, yes, a few have asked for some additional details, and so I'm waiting to hear back from them after looking at those, those changes, so.
That's it.
Doug?
I have nothing.
Okay, Ben.
I have a couple of dates for you.
Okay.
December 17th, holiday judging. 5:30, Public Works. I'm hoping to get some participation.
Yeah, we're in.
Perfect. Uh, and the second date is December 10th. For those who have participated in the past and helped us judge, we're gonna have a little Christmas pizza party at Public Works at 6 o'clock, again, December 10th.
Okay.
I do have one thing.
Sure.
Just the merry and bright, uh, festivities for the village, tree lighting, and, um, sponsorship is up, participation from businesses, local businesses is up. Um, it's gonna be a great event, so just put that out there. 5 o'clock on December 7th to 7 o'clock with, with partners with Gray Mill, Gray's Mill, BFW, and Cocoa Truck coming, so please come out and enjoy, help us celebrate.
I, just one item. Thank you to Director Wolf. Um, the light I talked about last time was fixed the next day. Thank you very much. Can't say the same for another municipality that's nearby. Anyway. Not bitter. Uh, we're coming back after this, right? Okay.
We can adjourn to-
We can adjourn to executives? Yeah, okay. Um, so you see, the future meetings are there, and we do have executive session, uh, to discuss the minutes of meetings for the purposes of approval by the body of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.06 pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 slash 2C21. Oh, my good grief. So we're, so, sorry.
We adjourned the session.
And then we're not coming back.